She'll be here in just a little bit.
Well, there's nobody here for public hearing. If I get shows up, he can take over. I would read that before the meeting. I want to remind everyone if you would like to have this petition, you must sign the podium. That's why you have to tell them. Hi, Gracie. Call the meeting to open, to order, regular meeting, April ninth, 2025. Roll call.
Mike Nichols.
Here.
Scott Highlander.
Here.
Charles Bates.
Here.
Sam Payne. Isaac Chavez.
Approval of minutes from March 12th meeting. Anybody read the minutes of the meeting?
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes of the March 12th, 2025 minute meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
I have to abstain. I wasn't at that one, right? Which one is it?
March 12th. That was our last meeting.
Oh, no, I was at that one.
Then you were there.
My second.
We have a motion and a second. Or approve?
Aye.
Approve?
Approve.
Yep.
Mike Nichols.
Aye.
Scott Highlander.
Aye.
Charles Bates.
Aye.
Isaac Payne. Isaac Chavez. And Sam Payne.
Aye. Okay, the minutes approved. Conflict of interest. Ask the board members if there's any conflict of interest in presentation petitions being heard tonight. The conflict of interest. Has anyone had contact with their board members or petitioners with the intent to discuss the happenings of tonight's meeting?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, new business tonight is public hearing for dock at 2025-005. Petitioners, Gracie Valderas requesting a special exemption to build a duplex in a B residential district. Bon, would you present the staff report, please?
I sure will. Thank you, Mr. President. Applicant is Gracie Valderas. The address is 359 South Second Street here in Frankfurt, Indiana. The request is located on lot number seven in block eight in the Cowan Crothers addition to the town, now the city of Frankfurt. As the same is recorded in plot record one, page 10 and 11, commonly known as 359 South Second Street here in Frankfurt, Indiana. The petitioner requests a special exception for approval for duplex in a B residential district. Unified Development Ordinance references this Article 11, definitions dwelling. Two-family duplex, a building located on a single lot containing two dwelling units arranged one above the other or side by side and occupied by not more than two families. Land use tables, appendix A, 2.02 dwelling, single family attached for sale or rent is a special exception in a B residential. The zoning for this property is B residential and the special exceptions can be, uh... Let me go again. Special exception from the case arising within the territorial jurisdiction. The Board of Zoning Appeals shall approve or deny all special exceptions from the terms of the zoning ordinance, but only in the classes of case or in a particular situation specified in the zoning ordinance. The Board may impose reasonable conditions and/or comments as pursuant to Indiana Code 36741015. A special exception shall be approved under this section if after a public hearing, the Board makes findings of facts in writing that one. The proposed use conforms to the district provisions in which it will be located and all general regulations of this ordinance. The lot, the total lot size will be approximately 66 by 132, 8,712 square feet with 66-foot affrontage. Our Unified Development Ordinance requires a minimum of 7,200 square feet and 60-foot frontage. It has enough pervious surface to allow four all-street parking spaces, and it will meet all general regulations of this ordinance, including the impervious surface ratio. The proposed use shall not involve any element or cause any conditions that may be dangerous, injurious, or noxious to any other property or persons and shall comply with the performance standards herein. The proposed duplex will not involve any element or cause any conditions that may be dangerous, injurious, or noxious to any other property or persons and shall comply with the performance standards herein. The proposed use shall be sighted, oriented, and landscaped so that the relationship of its building and grounds to adjacent buildings and properties does not impair health, safety, general welfare, or comfort, and does not adversely affect the values of adjacent properties. The duplex will be landscaped around the perimeter of the building as required by Table C, required buffer yards on page M27 of the Unified Development Ordinance. The owner will be required to comply with illustration number one on page M28. The proposed use shall produce a total environmental effect that is consistent with and not harmful to the environment of the neighborhood and will not impede the normal or orderly development and improvement of the surrounding properties for use already legally permitted in the district. Surrounding these laws are two-family rentals, one three-family rental, and an old sparrow florist shop to the rear of the property. Adding a duplex that will meet all the required building elements and adding all-street parking and sidewalks should enhance the neighborhood. The proposed use shall organize vehicular access and parking to minimize conflicting traffic movements on adjacent streets. Gracie, you will move the duplex farther off the front of the lot and place a driveway in front. Parking should not add difficulties along South Second Street. The driveway will not allow any on-street parking in front of the duplex. The proposed use has taken or will take adequate measures to provide utilities, access roads, drainage, or other necessary facilities. This property had a home demolished before the building. This building proposed duplex, the adequate measures to provide utilities, drainage, and other necessary facilities like all-street parking have been considered. The proposed use shall promote the objectives of this ordinance and shall be consistent with the city of Frankfurt's comprehensive plan. The UDO requires that duplexes be placed in B residential districts by special exceptions. The city of Frankfurt needs good rental homes, and this neighborhood supports a duplex as it already has rental properties in the neighborhood. This duplex will meet the density not to exceed six family units per acre, and so it is recommended that the special exception should be approved, subject to the findings of facts in the staff report. I want to say, and once again, I thank you. I try to get all the things that you bring up that I think needs to be answered. And when I do this density now, is I go all down. I go down First Street, I go down Second Street, or South Street, I go down Second Street. I do all the angles I could possibly make an acre in, and it all fits in properly. Matter of fact, it's five, so the duplex will now make it six, and so it meets that density requirement. So I thank you for causing my attention to that. And with that, I'm open for questions.
So I'm going to push back a little bit on this. It does meet the six family per acre. On number four, you say that there are two, two-family rentals and one three-family rentals.
Right.
That in and of itself is four, five, six, seven family. That's six family rentals within this block, correct?
Yeah, but what I'm counting are homes. I'm counting homes that are there. So where you have two-family rentals, that's one house.
I see what you're saying.
But it has one address.
I see what you're saying, but the, when you read the UDO and that limit, it's talking about family units. Like you even quote it as family units. And I think the reason for that is, is all about the density of how many people are living in that acre, right?
Right.
So when you have two, two-family rentals and a three-family rental, you're already at that, at the cusp of the B residential limit goal.
So I think I sent you an email after last month's meeting that basically said that in some areas of the community, reaching this requirement is going to be very, very difficult to do because when we rezoned the neighborhoods, we rezoned them all B-residentials because of the comprehensive plan requesting that you try to remove multifamily dwellings at that time. And so we didn't go through to look at whether or not the density levels were going to be there to make them see residuals or, or not. And so we cut down and sliced through and made everything B-residentials unless the property was already listed as a two-family dwellings. There were, or multifamily dwellings. And there were probably some that we missed, and as we gather them through the list, we tried to bring them back before the Plan Commission to get the zoning properly for, for that residential. And so I've not looked at these. We're getting ready to actually bring a house on Clinton Street that is for sale, that's multifamily dwelling. We rezoned it from C to B residential, so we're going to take it back. So to always try to meet that requirement is going to be difficult. And when I did my look, I was just counting the number of homes in an acre lot. So that's, that's how I did one of that.
And I appreciate what you're saying, but I think the, the goal of that was units specifically. And this is an instance where we're taking a single and trying to, she's asking for the exception to turn it into a double. So we're actually increasing the number outside of the rezoning that happened in the past. She's asking to increase that number. So I just wanted to point that out.
Okay.
And I had, I had some questions about the off-street parking as well.
Yes.
Now, now a time for that?
Yep.
Is there anywhere else in this, some proximity where we have parallel to street, off-street parking?
I could not find, I could not find any.
Okay.
We have a lot of, I shouldn't say a lot of, we have driveways that come off the front that, that people park in, but I cannot tell you whether, I couldn't find any that, that would be setting up where you have a place for four parking spots in front of the house.
Okay, I have, I have some concerns about sidewalks and parallel parking there. And I, I think that, and especially with that being a four-way stop right there on the corner. I think as you move those cars in to the property, you're going to, you're going to create some sightlines with that stop sign.
Well, there is a 15-foot, there's a 15-foot area. Yeah, that, that would be required. And understand that she is moving the house back on the lot to be able to put this facility in. She's, she's, I believe, understands that we're, you're not allowed to, even if you have a driveway, you got to get the driveway in front of the sidewalk because you can't park over the sidewalk. I wish I thought about that when they built the, the new elem, or the new school building there because I would have had them put that driveway longer or garage back further back so that they could actually park in the driveway. They're not going to be able to do that on the new facility because of the sidewalk. So I think some of that's in consideration. I do believe that if, if that doesn't occur in the front, she has plenty of ability to park on the backside. They're tearing down a garage that used to be there, or a cottage kind of garage. So there's, there is plenty of room on the backside to be able to put four parking spots off the alley.
That, that feels like a more appropriate thing versus the aesthetics of you having, you're introducing parallel off-street parking across the sidewalk in front of the house.
And you have the ability to recommend that if, if this were to pass, you could put that as your recommendations.
That, I go along with that as well. And the other thing you got to do there, you got to cut the curb.
Yeah, she would have to take the whole curb out and then put in their apron. That would allow her then access into the parking spot.
And what that's going to do, water drains going down through there is going to tear that up and open it up. And then people are going to park there next to that stop sign, and that's, that's not good.
Your recommendations, you can, you can recommend parking to the backside.
We can do that later when we get ready here. Gracie? Anything you would like to say? You sure? You're up next on the agenda.
Well, whatever you guys decided, if I can't build a duplex, then I will build a house. But I personally know that there's a lot of rentals here in Frankfurt, Indiana, that they're muted. So I have a person who is looking for a house, she can't find one. And I have a house that I put up for sale, and I took it off of the market just so that I can, and she doesn't have it for a second. So I mean, I know that I need it, but if you guys know, then I'll just go out.
We'll work through this.
Is, this might be a dumb question, but is...
No such thing.
Should this area be rezoned? Like, you know what I mean? You're coming to us for an appeal to the B residential aspect. Is that something that it should be going to the, a different board who would rezone this area since there are already so many? Or are some of these other rentals non-conforming uses or illegal conversions? I don't remember what the right phrases.
Well, non-conforming, it would be the proper, the proper wordage. And that is, I would have to take all the apartments that, that I said were sitting there and go back to the old zoning map to see if they were zone C-residentials. If they were zone Z-residentials, then I would go back to the Plan Commission and, and get them re-zoned. The thing that I, I don't like doing is kind of spot zoning. This isn't spot zoning because if Gracie sells the property, then the special exception goes away, and the next buyer has to come back in and ask for that special exception again. So I would rather do that so that if there's been challenges with the, with the property and the neighbors are like done with it, they can then come in and voice their opinion on whether or not they want that special exception in place. That's, that's why I do the special exceptions versus trying to rezone them.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Spot zoning is not a good thing.
I don't like spot zoning. And, and that's what, that's kind of what we're doing when you get into a, a C-residential, it's already there, but you can't just change it because that's what you want. So we try to fix those that we, we messed up.
What, so you're saying, what I heard you say was, if Gracie, if this goes through and she gets her special exception, if she sells that property to Charlie, for example.
Right.
He's got to come back in and ask.
That's right. That's right. He has to come back in and ask for the special exception. It only stays with the property.
So the existing duplex?
That don't make, that don't make sense.
Yeah.
I guess I'm confused.
Confused there because once we, once we say it's okay and it gets approved, then it should be approved and stay with the property.
I'm, I'm just telling you what I believe I read. I may be mistaken, but I believe that it stays with the property owner. Maybe I'm thinking of a used variance. Used variance, I know stays with the property owner, and they have to come back and redo the, a used variance. Maybe I'm thinking about that, not a special exception.
I mean, I'm familiar with that triplex across the street and the, one of the two-family houses across the other street. I mean, it's a pretty congested area already. Not going to lie.
Any other questions?
Hey, Gracie, would you, would you, if we required the parking be in the, in the back off the alley, would that change your, would you still make it a double? Or would you, would you say, no, I'm not going to do that one, make it a single? Or is that, does that bear, does that make a difference one way or the other?
Not really, because there is room in back too. We turned down that garage, I was in the back, so there is room for that.
So, so requiring the parking be in the back off the alley would not, would not be a showstopper for you?
Okay.
Just curious.
Well, this, then, and I take it this will not have a garage with it? Any other? Hearing none, a public hearing is closed. Any other discussion from the board members? Call for a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the, the variant, is it variants, is that right, Don? Variants, with the exception that we change or that we amend or put a stipulation that the parking moves to off the, off the backside of the, of thing, off the alley. The rear of property, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we reject the special exception.
We got to see if he gets a second on his.
See if he gets a second first.
Oh, I can't make a counter.
No.
Competing one?
And then if, and if I don't get a second, Don, we don't get a second, then it dies.
Yeah, it'll die because of a lack of a second.
Okay.
Die. Now Charles.
So I'll make a motion, we do not approve the special exception. That it, that it does not meet the objectives of the Frankfurt Comprehensive Plan based on density for B residential.
Perfect, that is perfect.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Mike Nichols.
Nay.
Sam, Scott Highlander.
Aye.
Charles Bates.
Aye.
Sam Payne.
Passes three-one to not allow.
So Gracie, we, it'll be number seven that we'll, we'll change, which basically will say that the duplex does not meet the density to exceed six single-family units per acre. We'll have to, we'll have to redo that section.
Okay.
So that says you're negative for your reason for not passing. And then everybody will need to come in and sign, sign that. Well, what's it say on there, Grace? Does it, can they sign that? I think they can sign that form.
Yeah.
And then I'm going to change seven to say that will not meet the density level, and then we'll be okay. Well, you signed that, Sam, under other business. We're calling for a special meeting for you guys on the 23rd of April. And the reason for that is there is a new data center that's coming to the industrial park. Its location will be out by ConAgra. And that has to go in by special exception. And so we're working on all that information right now. Hopefully you'll be getting it somewhere in the next, you know, 10 to 12, 14 days so that you'll have it before the meeting. Your meeting will not be at 5:30 that day. You'll be at 5 o'clock on the 23rd because the Plan Commission meets that night. So we'll run through the, the special exception for the data center to be located in an industrial park. And, and so we're doing that by special exception. And then the following month, you're, you're going to have a, another...
Don, you said that's the 23rd, correct?
Is that a Wednesday?
Yes, in two weeks.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
The, the following meeting in May, we're coming back again with somebody else who's trying to put a duplex in a, in a B residential district located on Vandelia Street off of Wash, or West Morrison Street. And before we do all that, I will again start looking at some, the acreage there.
Where's, where's that one?
It's all, as you come off of West Morrison Street onto Vandelia, and you make that curve, it's the very last house there. It's already a two-apartment complex. They started to build, and I told them to stop until they got their special exception because if it got denied, then you're going to have to make it into a single-family dwelling. So we caught wind that that was going on as far as work being done to the house. And so we made contact with the owner today, got things arranged for him to come in, in May. I think that's the 14th of May. That was the second Wednesday of the month there. And so we'll start doing all of our, my homework to make sure if it doesn't meet the density level or whatever, then we'll, we'll have a discussion with him, knowing now that, you know, it's got to meet those things prior to coming to the board, so...
What time did you say that one on the 23rd would be?
It'll be at 5 o'clock.
Put it on my calendar, sorry.
So if, if you get back and you realize that you can't come, make sure you let Gracie know so we can make sure we have a majority here of at least three individuals so that we can move on the special exception for the, for the data center that's coming into town.
A new factory?
Yeah, it's, it has eight units into this system. They meet, right now, they meet all the criteria of separation of, of, I think it's 25 feet between buildings. And the only thing that we're working on right now is the impervious surface ratio. But if it doesn't meet 50%, they're required to put in a holding pond. So all of the water, stormwater that they have, if it's not impervious, the pond will have to hold the water. So it's kind of a washout as far as requiring the 50%, but we're, we're trying to get there without, with the pond. So we'll see where that goes. That would be the only challenge that we would have. I mean, they have plenty of, they're going to have plenty of parking. They're going to employ about 250 people there when this thing is up and running. And it's a, going to be a high-paying position too for, for the employees going in.
That's, that's in city, in the city limits?
Just, just inside. It's, it's just east of the ConAgra. It used to be ConAgra property, and they sold it, well, potentially will sell it. This special exception, when we, we come before you for the data center, will be an exception that if everything gets approved and the sale goes through, then the special exception. If it doesn't, then the, the special exception won't, won't hold in place. I, I don't, I don't want to set precedent to a property that maybe doesn't get what it needs to do. So it, there'll be, there'll be an exception to that to say that the property has to move to be a data center or the special exception goes away. If it gets passed.
That's where ConAgra had planned on to expand their business.
Yeah, they got, they got ripped on a little bit, Sammy, about that too, so...
Yeah, they was going to, they were going to build on to that plan.
Yeah, they were going to.
Because I was...
Imagine that.
Yeah. Just imagine, I inspected that whole thing.
I didn't think, I didn't think data centers employed a lot of people. I'm surprised about that.
Yeah, 250 is what they're, they're expecting.
That's good. That's good.
Curious about this house on Vandelia still.
Yeah, I am too.
So it's, it's actually an apartment that has a second floor and a first floor and a garage off-street. They, they do have...
Is it directly the, does it share a fence line with that Norfolk Southern building? Is it that one?
No, I don't think you, so if you come down West Ohio Street.
I've got it pulled up. Just want to point it out.
I can point it up.
Sewer Maintenance Alley.
What?
Vandelia.
Sewer Maintenance Alley, isn't it?
Yeah, West Ohio is.
West Ohio, yeah, it's right there on the point.
It'd be all the way down.
It's right.
That one?
One welts. Around the corner.
There. Yeah, I know that area pretty well down there. Okay.
So that's what you have coming before you in the next couple of meetings. We thought about trying to swing that in on the special, but that's too much to go before the Plan Commission, so we moved it to May. And it gives me a little more time to do my homework before, if it even comes to you yet, so...
So where does this, for tonight, then, now where does this put Gracie on her building or her structure? Are you going to still build a single-family dwelling or what are you going, okay, you're still going to build there? I drove by there the other day, not knowing what was going on here and seeing that that house was all tore down.
It's already torn down.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's down.
The garage is partially down.
Yeah.
So, yep, the lot's almost empty.
Yeah, it's, that's one that needed to go. You and I have had that discussion.
Yeah, well...
That, that was one of them.
I would have this discussion if I was on the air, but on the air, so we'll just be quiet with it.
If there's no other business before the Board, I would make them assume a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All approved.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep.